We do have someone participating via Zoom? Nothing. If there's nobody on Zoom, we're not going to acknowledge it. We can't if they're not there.
Right.
Well, they could come in.
Thirty seconds. You can shut it down. She sent me a text.
Okay.
I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirement, sorry, of RSA 91A22. Prayer will be offered tonight by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Senate will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Moran.
I'm here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Wolfshire.
I am here. Alderwoman Kelly did let me know that she was unable to be here this evening. She's not feeling well.
Thirteen present and two absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton and Deputy Corporation Counsel Celia Leonard. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. A few things I wanted to mention. First, the revaluation notices went out within the last couple of days and were received by property owners across the city. You recall that we did the last revaluation in 2022 after a four-year hiatus, and the impact was significant because the residential properties went up so much, whereas the commercial did not, which had the effect of shifting property taxes toward our residential home-owning taxpayers. Now, these revaluations are required by the state of New Hampshire, so this isn't something that we can forego, although we would like to do so. The Board of Aldermen, the city reacted to that, the impact we know that homeowners felt, by passing a budget and a tax rate last year in the fall of 2023, which went up 0.9%, less than 1%, the lowest increase in 15 years or so. And the point there was to try to ameliorate a little bit the effect of the revaluation of the previous year. So the board, we decided and approved last year the approach that we would go, we would do another revaluation after two years, so that if residential values continued to go up, or if there was, there were, continued to be these distinctions between the various properties, that the impact would not be as great as it had been in 2022. Now, the notices went out, and again, residential values went up very, very significantly, on average, 19 or 20%. The good news, and these are just rough estimates, so the good news is, commercial property also went up, not as much as the residential, maybe as much as 15%. So the gap between the increase for the homes and the increase for commercial, that is industrial and other properties like that, malls, the gap was not nearly as great as we saw two years ago. Now, the, and so, we don't know yet exactly what the tax rate will be, but the, I just wanted to explain, you know, what, what we think is likely to happen. So there will be a slight shift towards residential. Now, the good news about all this, I asked, well, how much has the value of the city gone up in the last eight years? And the answer is, as of April 1, 2015, the total value of all properties in the city was just over $9 billion. And the residential portion of that tax base, these include single-family homes, condos, and smaller apartment buildings. The residential, the residential total was fi, five, a little over $5 billion. Now, as of this year, our estimate is that the total value of the city will grow, has grown, it's really basically doubled, to over $18 billion. Almost 18 and a half billion is the current estimate. Those figures are not yet final, but those are pretty close. And the total residential value, those are the single-family homes and the smaller apartment buildings, has climbed to nearly $12 billion. So in that eight years, property owners in the city of Nashua have gained in total $9 billion of value, and the residential homeowners, condo owners, and small apartment owners have gained $6 billion. Now, these are, this is with a B. These aren't millions. Six billion for, for homeowners. Again, it doesn't help pay the bills. We get the fact that when these revaluations occur and the, and that there's a shift towards residential, that it is a hardship for people to pay. But the silver lining here is that our residents have gained billions, billions in wealth, in family wealth, over the last eight years. And over the long run, that is going to have a very significant positive impact on many, many people who own property in the city. So I wanted to touch on that, and anybody who disagrees with their evaluation will have the opportunity to meet with, or at least, you know, meet with the assessors and appeal if they wish. And so I can answer any questions about that, if you have any. I did want to briefly touch on this debt exclusion ordinance, which was, or resolution which was considered the other night by the Budget Committee. Now, a lot of people said that this came up too quickly, and they need more time to think about that. Great. There's no urgency here. This can, this requires more explanation, more discussion. The irony is that the lar, the most significant things that require the exclusion are these bond issues. Now, the bond issues have no impact on the current budget, because they might get sold in a year, year and a half, and then no payments are made for six months or a year till after that. They have no impact on the current budget. Now, this seems weird and contrary to common sense, and certainly, we agree with it. But this is what the legislature did when it passed essentially the city budget, the city budget cap a couple of years ago. And they did this against, and Alderman Cle was there, I don't know who else was in the legis, Alderman Moran, Alderman O'Brien, they were there unanimously. The House delegation from Nashua, 27 to nothing, said to the legislature, this doesn't make sense. This is stupid. Do not do this. They did it anyway. So we're left with this cap that doesn't seem to make sense in many respects. The cap was operating pretty well for a number of years until one of our residents sued over a minor change that we, we made to it, and the court invalidated the whole thing. That's how this started, without the city even asking. City never asked for that, didn't expect it. The court invalidated it, went to the Supreme Court, and they affirmed the decision. It was inconsistent with state law. Then the legislature got in the act and made things worse. So now, if we go forward and fund the SURF, yes, that would, that would add to the budget. But these bond issues, the garage, the, the police training facility, the fish ladder, whatever else, these don't, these don't affect the budget at all for, for a year or two. Anyway, I just wanted to touch on that. So we're prepared to discuss that in a lot more detail whenever people want to hear from us. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention just a couple of events that occurred in the city. The ribbon cutting took place at the Arlington Street Community Center about a week ago Friday, I believe, following a major rehab of that 120-year-old building, funded largely through an allocation of ARPA funds, federal, but came through the state of New Hampshire, and with some local match. And so the building has been fixed up, the, it's in much better shape, both interior and exterior. At the Arlington Street Community Center, they're conducting a lot of really good programs. There, there's a pre-K program, there's, there are family counseling groups, there's dance classes, just a lot of things going on there that I think are very positive for that neighborhood. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention the multicultural festival, which took place the next day, a week ago Saturday, around the library. A lot of our different communities in the city did various dances and other entertainment. It was a really nice event. I wanted to thank Jen Hoskins from the Nashville Public Library, Rada Munoz from Public Health, our Public Health Department, and Claudia Decker, and everyone else who was involved in organizing and making that a success. There were students that came in with flags of various countries. It was very colorful. I wanted to thank them as well. So overall, it was a great event, and we're looking forward to holding it again next year. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. One, the multicultural festival was great. I, I went. I was there with many. Alderman, Tebow was there, Alderman Lopez, made sure pictures went over to Alderman Timmons because she was on a trip, and it went very well, and thanks to the library, too, for hosting it. In regards to the assessments, I think I would say that we should handle it with grace whenever we talk to residents regarding it. You know, obviously, it's something the Board of Assessors has to deal with, but it is very scary for folks who, mine went up maybe just under $130,000, but I'm in a different category. There are, you know, people on fixed incomes, maybe widowed, elderly, pension. They see the rate go up, and maybe they say, oh, great, in 10 years, this will be good for me. I can sell, I can take my investment and move to Florida and live out my retirement. But in the meantime, that 10 years can be hard if you're looking at the value and thinking, oh, let me multiply it by the current tax rate, that's how much is going up. And they're not in this day-to-day stuff like it's, we aren't as a board, because the ma, the mayor runs the city. And they don't know the finer details. The tax rate comes out later on. We can change the tax rate. We can shift it to the commercial. So there's fear there for folks who need our grace right now, and we need to help guide them to the appropriate folks. But we should be mindful that, yes, I live in a million-dollar home. I won't notice, I won't notice paying more taxes. Other folks are looking at their tax bills and are in tears before this assessment came out. And there's a spectrum of those people in this city. And I want to make how vastly different the spectrum is for, from, you know, using billions to, to low-income folks that are living in the city. One of my, my receptionist was homeless, is getting into the neighborworks apartments downtown, pay her $19.50 an hour. I thought that was a great rate. I had to give her a 50-cent raise in order to qualify for low-income housing right here, and I'm sure they get some kind of waiver for their taxes. And then I look, my daughter goes to bicentennial, and they're posting a full-time teaching job for $18.50. So I see that someone who's going to work full-time at my daughter's school can't afford low-income housing that we just built. So I'm relaying these stories and these perspectives to make sure everyone understands that we need grace. Not everyone's in my category, but everyone's in my receptionist's category. It's a mixture. People are entitled to feel upset, and they're entitled to feel like me, that my home value went up. It's probably worth more than what the city says it is. But it's not an equal representation of how people feel, and we should respect that.
I should have mentioned that the tax rate isn't going to go down. It's not going to be the same tax rate. So people shouldn't think that their taxes will go up by the amount of the assessment.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your explanation of the reassessment, and I understand this was approved via a contract that came through the Finance Committee in July of '23. I think my big gripe with this whole process was the communication around it. When we did the big reassessment before, we were always getting updates on it. We were told we are X amount done, we're this amount done, bills are going out here, notices are going out then. And it just felt like a very open, transparent process that there was no surprises. And I'll tell you, on Saturday, when those hit the mail, there was a lot of surprises aboard one. Been on the board three years now. This was easily the single most contacted-me issue I've ever had to deal with. Between phone calls and emails, it has been almost nonstop. And I think it was the, the blindsiding, if you will, of this that was really tough. Yeah, we talked about it. It got brought up at a few meetings and just passing comment and whatever it might be, and that's, that's great. But we never had an official communication to the board that this was going on. Even something like that, for something this big that affects each and every one of our residents, would have been something that would have been nice to have. Even just, we've started doing the reevaluation. We're about to send out the bills. Would have been very useful information, because now, as was just said, there's the shock value of this just showed up in the mail, and it's, oh. And with the higher values and what taxes are in this city now, I mean, I look at my situation for somebody, for a wife who works in City Hall, getting awfully tough to live in this city. And with assessment values going up, taxes going up, it's, finances are tight. And I absolutely understand the feelings of my constituents who have all reached out to me regarding this issue. And I feel we could have just done better educating the public, and we could have done better easing everybody on what the long-term plan was here. I just feel there was a, a big lack of communication, and that was, that, that hurt for a lot of people. So, thank you.
Well, I think you're right, that the communication could have been better. I think people just, this had been discussed at the board a few times. I think people just assumed that you understood that this would be coming out, you know, around now. But obviously, that wasn't, if that was the assumption, it wasn't accurate. So, yes, I get the point, and the communication should have been better.
Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Guess on a lighter topic, just, you know, relay and reiterate the comments about the Arlington Street Community Center. I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting grand reopening. And as somebody who spends decent amount of time there, the, the building looks really good. It was, it was showing its age, and a significant investment has been made in that, is ADA-compliant entrances, ADA-compliant restrooms, which anybody who's tried to squeeze into those restrooms knows, that's a, that's a welcome change. It's, everything's very familiar in there, but it really does feel like a new building. So congratulations to Jessica Haig and her, her team over there. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I was at the multicultural festival, like Alderman Moran said, and it was a great event. And I thank everybody that put it on. I know it's a, a lot of work to do that, and I appreciated that, and I'm glad we were outside this year, because last year we were squeezed inside. So that was great. So about these revaluations, obviously, I got the letter on Saturday as well. I think my biggest problem is getting it on Saturday and not being able to really talk to anyone about it until Monday, really. You know, I mean, I think, I'm guessing that the mayor knew they were going out, but didn't know they were going out right now. We were going to get them on Saturday. And I assume that even Director Cummings didn't know that. You know, one of these things here with this is that Alderman and the mayor himself cannot get involved in any of this. And if the mayor or legal want to explain a little bit about that, so people are very clear that we cannot get involved in the assessments. What we can do is, we can tell our constituents what they can do as far as the appeal process, right? One thing we shouldn't do is get them riled up without explaining what's going on. An assessment doesn't mean your taxes are going up. It does not mean that. But yet, that's what some people think. And I think that's what gets people crazy, and they start freaking out about it. I, my assessment went up, and I am not in Alderman Moran's category by any stretch of the imagination, one salary and not, not making, you know, that kind of money. And, you know, mine went up $80,000 roughly, $75,000, something like that, for a very, very small house. Now, the house next to me sold for $650, which I would never in my life think that that would ever be worth that. When I bought my house, it was $175. People want their taxes to be on the $175. Well, that's just, everything goes up. So that's not realistic. But at the end of the day, I could probably sell my house for more than the assessment. So we want it to be something where we can sell the house for a lot of money, but then when we get the assessment, we, we want it to be as low as possible. There, there's an in-between there. And, you know, the one thing I'll say is, let's get the tax rate, let's see what we can do about the tax rate, and then take it from there. But if someone wants to appeal their assessment, absolut, absolutely do it. And reach out, get an appointment. But I would like to hear about, like, you know, the, the, you know, what we can do as Aldermen, because I don't think we can get involved anywhere with this, other than putting that in, that we can do the assessments more often, or, or the legislation we put in a couple of years ago.
Well, totally agreed. I mean, I have always stayed away from assessments, never discussed any assessments with anyone down there. And I've always said that, I think the Aldermen should do the same. And why? Because we do not want people to think that this is a political process. The assessment might be right, it might be wrong, but if it's wrong, it's not because you don't know someone on the Board of Aldermen or something like that. And we don't want anyone to get the impression that if they call an Alderman, if they call the mayor, they might get some kind of reduction. It is not a political process. It is based upon what these professionals think. And right or wrong, it is, you know, it's not political, and it makes no difference who you know or who you don't know or anything like that. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. When the, when the mayor gave the things that happened this weekend, I don't know if he had a chance to go to the Mount Pleasant 100th anniversary, but that was also this, this past weekend. And in speaking about the, the revales, I, I too, along with my, I'm sure all of my colleagues, and, but I think my colleague from Ward 1 put it, put it best, was inundated with, with calls and also reached out to my, my constituents. We didn't know that they were coming out. It would have been nice to have had the notice, but I don't think anybody from the city knew it as well, that these were, these were coming out. I would be curious to know what the overall increase in the city's value was. I think that would kind of help the, the constituents. They know how much their values increased, but to know what the city's overall value increased might help them, not just the number of billions of dollars, but what percentage the city overall increased, to find out kind of where they sit within, within that type of thing. It kind, I think, kind of helps them know that. And the letter very specifically said that do not take the current tax rate and multiply by it. That will absolutely make everybody, everybody panic. But the long and the short of it is, we're going to be sweating it out for many people between now and, and October, November, when the state sets our, it's our rate. But I'm going to encourage everybody, you know, if you, if you think that your rate is wrong, if you think that your, your evaluation, your assessment is, is inaccurate, if it's too high, reach out, make an appointment. My husband did. Richard has made an appointment. He's got an appointment, and I'm going to go with him, because I want to see how the process is made. It's not that he necessarily disagrees with it, but he wants to know how they came up with that. He wants to know how they came up with that number. Where did they do? And I'm going to suggest to everybody, just go in, ask them how they did it. Don't argue with them. Ask them how they did it. If you disagree with it, then tell them why you think that they were wrong. Let them hear why you think that they're wrong. They're probably not going to give you an answer then, but they're going to take it back, and then they're going to redo everything that they think that they can, and they're going to come. If you notice, your letter says preliminary number, not final number, but preliminary number, and then they will come back with it. Obviously, if they change it, whatever the city says is the percentage, that will change as well. So I know it's easy to panic. I know I sweated out when I looked at it, too. We're on fixed income. You know, we're getting, you know, Social Security and, and so on. So, yeah, it's a scary thing to see your, your numbers go up so high. Thank you.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of August 13th and August 26, 2024 to be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
None.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have no one signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding Kubota tractor.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase of a Kubota Series BX2680V1 tractor to be used for the building maintenance at the Police Department with MB Tractor and equipment in the amount of $31,729.71. Funding will be through Department 150, Police Department Fund 81500-Vehicle/SURF.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Magnet Forensic LLC.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase and renewal contract for software subscription used to extract data from locked mobile devices, provides access to computers, cloud services, and vehicles, and the examination of surveillance footage for forensic investigations with Magnetic Forensics LLC in the amount not to exceed $51,862.20. Funding will be through Department 150, Police Department Fund 55620, Software Subscription Services/General Fund $20,000, and 55620, Software Subscription Services Forfeiture Fund $31,862.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. On this particular, if you can answer this, on this particular ordinance, is this only for criminals? I mean, is, is there a degree of privacy? We're not going to use this to look into anybody's cellphone or...
Madam.
Alderman Cle.
I believe this came through from the, the police. This was part of their contract. It came through us from, I don't believe that, I was just trying to see if there was anybody here from that. So I think it was just during their investigations and so on. I don't think they're going to go over to you, Alderman O'Brien, and say we want to just be able to do that. I think it was through investigations and so on, if they, they probably had it. I will assume that it was through a warrant, but I would assume that Attorney Bolton would be able to answer that question.
Attorney Bolton?
That's, that's essentially correct. These are criminal investigations if the police obtain a search warrant to search- obtain a search warrant to search someone's cellphone, laptop, computer, uh, tablet, that sort of thing. This is a tool that will allow them to extract information, uh, phone calls, perhaps location information as to where that phone has been. It doesn't happen all the time, but when they need it, they need it, and, uh, yes, to invade citizens' privacy willy-nilly, criminal investigations, in particular with a search warrant, to get into the device.
And Attorney Bolton, I wholeheartedly support this. I just didn't want anybody looking at my draft king pics.
Nobody will.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Stanley Elevator Company, Inc.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a multi-year contract for scheduled maintenance for both city and school district elevators with Stanley Elevator Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. Year one, seventy-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-six. Year two, eighty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen, and year three, eighty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty dollars. Funding will be through Department 129 Buildings and Grounds and not through Department 128 Risk Management, as stated in the motion at the Finance Committee meeting. Uh, also Fund five-four-two-six-seven Elevator Boiler Maintenance slash General Fund.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
Uh, through the chair to Alderman Dowd. Uh, is this addressing the elevator that won't go in the schools?
Say that again.
The elevator that won't go up?
No.
Okay.
That, that elevator, the main municipal school, needs to be completely replaced. It's not a maintenance item.
Okay.
But it was Stanley that, that indicated that it could no longer be used.
Okay, and the con- the contract for that hasn't been awarded yet?
No.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, it has been. It has been awarded.
To Stanley?
Through, through Stanley to replace the elevator.
Okay, but different from this legislation?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
So it's separate from this. It has nothing to do with this, other than going forward, the maintenance of it will feed through this.
This is only maintenance.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Alderman, all set? Okay, you've heard the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Hartz Commission Carol W. Robey, reappointment, term to expire August thirty-first, twenty-two-seven-nine Mendelsohn Drive Hollis, New Hampshire, zero-three-zero-four-nine. Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority Helen Honero, reappointment, term to expire October fourteenth, twenty-two-nine, forty-six Raymond Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero-three-zero-six-four.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August fifth, twenty-two-four Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, accept it and place it on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August sixth, twenty-two-four Joint Meeting of Human Affairs Committee and Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the August seventh, September fourth, and September eighteenth, twenty-two-four Finance Committee, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August fourteenth, twenty-two-four Joint Meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners and Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the August twentieth, twenty-two-four Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the August nineteenth and September sixteenth, twenty-two-four Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the August twenty-eighth, twenty-two-four Committee on Infrastructure, be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-eight-zero relative to the transfer of fifty-eight thousand from Department 194 Contingency Account seven-zero-one-two-zero Contingency Police Grants to Department 150 Police Account five-one-one-zero-zero, wages full-time.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four zero-eight-zero, and I'd like to speak to it very briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
This was unanimously approved at the Budget Committee. Uh, this is a, uh, police grant, uh, and, um, it's something that fits into their requirements.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-four eighty is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-eight-one, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four zero-eight-one.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Uh, this, um, this also passed budget. Uh, I'm not sure if anybody got the chance to, to re-watch the meeting, but there were a lot of dollars mentioned, and we are moving six million dollars from our surplus that we collected last fiscal year against the tax rate. Uh, obviously, uh, you know, I wish it was more, but I will take, uh, what we can get and move this along. Uh, I, I hesitate based on everything that transpired before this discussion, but, uh, at the budget meeting, uh, CFO Griffin mentioned that, uh, with the budget going up about four percent, this, this could lower it, uh, below that, so I think it's a good idea to pass this and lessen the, um, the impact on, on Nashua.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Alderman Gavea.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, anytime we could give surplus back to the taxpayers is a good thing. Wish we could do more, but we'll take what we could get. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Jody.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so, um, you know, I've been asked, you know, why, why isn't it more? And, uh, perhaps the, uh, the mayor or Attorney Bolton could explain. I, I, uh, I'm under the impression, uh, number one, that, uh, I don't remember the numbers, but I know the mayor submitted a memo explaining that, you know, we, we have, uh, you know, a surplus, um, which, uh, isn't just from last year's tax collections, but over the years, we've accumulated this surplus, uh, but we are, uh, you know, under certain constraints. One is, there's a state law that requires that we maintain a certain level of surplus, and we have, in addition to that, we have a, a city ordinance, uh, which requires that we maintain an even higher level of surplus, and, uh, and of course, we are always, uh, being looked at by the bonding companies who also wanna see a healthy surplus, so I don't know if the mayor or Attorney Bolton could explain to the public exactly what our constraints are and why the six billion, uh, six million, uh, is not higher.
Well, um, we do, we, we have those, uh, constraints that you mentioned. There's a, uh, city ordinance that requires that we have an undesignated or a reserve account of at least, what, ten percent of the city budget, and it's more like eleven, eleven and a half that we have. Um, could it be more? Yes, but, uh, but then you sacrifice something else. So, we have, in the past, uh, used part of the surplus to fund the equipment purchases for the following year, for the surf. Um, and the other, at least, possibility is that the, uh, board adopted, or at least that the board, that this ad hoc committee adopted, the idea that we should start funding, uh, a new budget approach and start funding smaller, I use that as a relative term, million to a million and a half dollar projects out of cash rather than bonding them. And to do that, that's a real, that's a large budget change, because we've not done that in the past. Uh, so some of this money could be used for that, rather than bonding a few projects. Um, and finally, I mean, the, I think that the reliability, uh, of the, you know, you, I think you don't want a tax rate that really yo-yo's up and down, you know? Next one year, it's down five percent, the next year it's up fifteen, you know? Um, so, uh, it's best to, the approach we've used is a kind of a, over the, over some time, is a relatively conservative approach, which puts a decent amount towards the tax rate, but not so much that the next year, if you cannot match it, then the next year you see an artificial increase in the tax rate. So, um, six million seemed like a healthy amount, and, uh, and yet, it's not something that, uh, we probably couldn't equal next year.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman.
That last point, if we, if we did eight, and then next year we can only do four, then the tax rate goes up, you know, almost two percent without a budget, you know, it, because you can't, you haven't been able to match what you did the year before. So, um, if you, if you do four million less one year than the previous year, then the tax rate goes up four million, or that's about a percent and a half, uh, before you even reach the budget or consider any expenditures or anything like that. So, to try to maintain some stability, uh, is part of the conservative approach.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, I just wanted to comment on the surplus itself, because I think some of us are definitely getting ready to do our laps, to tell everybody that we gave money back to the taxpayers, but we should credit our city department staff and planners, uh, for being able to maintain the surplus, because we budget effectively. We don't usually have departments that are under budget or, you know, going broke, um, and we don't have budget, departments that are grossly over budget. Uh, the only one I can think of is city welfare, and that's because of a few humanitarian issues that, that state, um, constitution requires us to address. Um, so, I just wanna make sure we were giving credit to city staff, um, and the mayor himself, for being able to have this surplus to give back to taxpayers to pay down the tax rate.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-eight-three relative to the acceptance of sixty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety, twenty-two-three State Homeland Security Grant Program into fire grant activity hazmat refresher class.
Alderman Lopez.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four zero-eight-three.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, I would just want to make this comment that the Aldermen are aware of. We still have trains going through Nashua on some pretty bad track. You know, we've tried in the past to get the track upgraded. Maybe it'll be done if we ever went to commuter rail, and we're gonna discuss commuter rail, uh, tomorrow night during the infrastructure meeting, so how's that for a plug?
[laughing]
You know, segue into it. But don't forget the highway. You know, there's a lot of hazmat material that gets transported within the city, and we're very fortunate to have a team of firefighters that are well-trained and capable, and I have to say, well-equipped to do this. So I hope you will join me in supporting this. It, it's something that is, that will go to the safety, and the safety, you perhaps maybe save a firefighter's life by not contaminating him. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-four eighty-three is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-eight-four, establishing the initial valuation of the taxable property in the Mohawk Tannery Redevelopment Project, allocating tax revenue from the Mohawk Tannery Redevelopment Project, and authorizing entering into pledge agreement with the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority, all in connection with a bond not to exceed two-million-five-hundred-thousand power amount to be issued by the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four oh-eight-four.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I will be so happy when we finally put this to bed. We just had a bill before us that discussed hazardous material, and that was a very dangerous area. Brownfields, uh, there was a point there, I fought a couple of fires when they, you know, Anosanis was burning down and everything, and God only knows, the smoke and everything else, you know, what you get tied into. It was definitely a millstone around the community. This has gotta help, so therefore, I'm very excited about this. Thank you, Madam President.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
Um, as my colleague just pointed out, this is part of the Mohawk Tannery remediation and then redevelopment project. Um, it's appreciated by much of the community and the neighbors in the area right around it. Um, I've heard some say that they might miss the smell in a couple of years, but, um, largely, I think, uh, the city staff need to be credited for, and the developers for coming up with a workable plan, which, complex as it may seem, has at least managed to address something that even, uh, the EPA wasn't able to address. That site should have been a superfund site decades ago. The owner should have been held responsible. It was at an impasse for a long period of time, and finally, we were able to do something to clean the area up.
Alderman Jody.
At, at the risk of putting my nose in where it doesn't belong, I, I noticed that Attorney Westgate is here, and Attorney Leonard, and, uh, I wouldn't wanna deny them the opportunity to speak about this if, if they're here for that purpose, but if they're not, then, you know, forget I, forget I brought it up.
Did you wish to address the void, Attorney Westgate? You don't have to.
Thank you, Madam President. Brad Westgate, Wiener Bennett Lawyer in Nashua, representing Blaylock Holdings LLC, the prospective developer of Tannery Site. I came only in the event when one of the board members of the president, uh, had any questions. I would be happy to answer them if called on.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, we had a public hearing on this the other couple nights ago, and, and had, was fully explained, and all the questions that came up, uh, were, were answered, so, uh, I think that we're good to go for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a pass on this side. Okay.
I'll withdraw my nose.
Never stick your nose in a tannery.
Thank you, Alderman Jody. Motion is for final passage of Resolution twenty-four eighty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Resolution twenty-four eighty-four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-eight-five relative to the acceptance of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars from the United States Department of Energy into community development grant activity fiscal year twenty-five, energy efficiency and conservation block grant, E E C P G.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four zero-eight-five.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, and Resolution twenty-four eighty-five is declared duly adopted. New business, unfinished business ordinances.
Madam President.
Business, business unfinished at the previous meeting.
Madam President.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading and possible final passage of R twenty-four oh-eight-nine, and I'd like to speak to it, please.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Uh, last Thursday night, we went through and litigated this, uh, resolution, and I was surprised not to see it on the agenda for tonight. I understand, uh, what the mayor had said in his opening remarks. However, uh, I feel that there is urgency around this, because it does affect our current year budget, and I think the sooner we approve this and move this forward, we can start working on the plan. Uh, from the Budget Committee, the plan is set. Uh, I thought it fair that since the other three of the resolutions that we brought up on the agenda, we were able to vote on tonight, which all passed, I felt it appropriate to have this one come forward and move this forward in the city. to have this one come forward and move this forward in the city. So I'd like to make that motion, please.
Roll call.
Okay. Motion is for a second reading, and a roll call has been requested. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Juddi.
No.
Alderman Thivo.
No.
Alderman Klee.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
Five yays, eight nays.
That motion fails. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-24-082, relative to the acceptance of up to $610,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program into police grant activity fiscal year 25 Homeland Security Grants.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Thivo, Alderman Klee. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-24-091, approving the cost items of a sidebar agreement between the National Board of Police Commissioners and UFPO Local 645 Professional Employees of the National Police Department regarding adding two new positions.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Govea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Thivo, Alderman Klee, and Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-24-092, authorizing Penetech Waterworks, Inc. to renew and increase its fixed asset line of credit with TD Bank NA.
Additional sponsors. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penetech Water Special Committee.
First reading of R-24-093, establishing a community energy benefit rate expendable trust fund funded by appropriations for the purpose of funding community energy projects.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-24-094, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $617,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation FTA Section 5339 funds, and $130,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation State Fiscal Year 2025 Capital Match Funds into Transit Grant Activity Transit Capital Projects.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Thivo, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, October 28, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Aldemantic Chamber. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-24-034, assigning the Pine Street Extension Parking Lot to Zone 3.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Klee, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period of public comment. We have four individuals who have signed up this evening. Nicholas Scolera.
Hello again, Board. My name is Nicholas Scolera, Tupannington Place here in Nashua. Wanted to start off going over some past meetings here at this, in this chamber. I was very disappointed after the debate that we had at the last full Board of Alder meeting about the wording of the ceasefire resolution that is currently tabled in the Human Affairs Committee. After the debate that we had in this chamber in the full board meeting about whether the wording or not would be good enough to go forward, and debate about wanting to continue this conversation, very disappointed to see that none of the non-registered members of the Human Affairs Committee decided to show up to talk about this resolution. So I guess you guys don't actually have many concerns about it. With that, you missed a pretty lively show at the Human Affairs Committee. We had a former alderman of this committee come forward and put into the record his proposed amendment for the resolution that called for the complete ethnic cleansing of Gaza, putting all of the current Gazans into the Sinai in Egypt, and called for the complete repatriation of the West Bank into the modern state of Israel, a war crime. That is not my opinion. That is the opinion of any international court, any international body. It is territorial gain through conquest. It is one of the first rules in the Geneva Convention that cannot happen. So, to counteract that, I will be sending you all an email that I request for a document to be put into the record. I brought a physical document to show you all. This is a list, for the people at home, of every single person who has been killed in Gaza since October 7. It is 649 pages. It lists over 34,000 people who have been murdered by our weapons, some of them, whether or not manufactured here, but certainly designed here in Nashua through BAE Systems. The first 14 pages of this document are all people under the age of one, the majority of them born after this conflict started, who had no part in this conflict, that have been slaughtered by our weapons. Every morning, I wake up with bated breath, hoping that I do not see, especially now with this continued conflict in the West Bank, and now the illegal bombing of Beirut in southern Lebanon. I wait with bated breath, hoping that I don't see a headline come across my phone saying, "Any number of people killed in Beethsahore", a suburb of Bethlehem in the West Bank, where I have many friends, like I've said to this board many times. Man by the name of George Rush Maui, my father is here, he knows I love him very much, but George Rush Maui is another father figure of mine. He is a proud man with a proud history of his family living in that area. Every morning, I wake up and hope to God above that I do not see his name saying that he was slaughtered with our tax dollars by the Israeli occupying forces. So, in a way to counteract the war crime that was advocated for in this chamber, I'm asking that this document be added into the record as well. Thank you.
Dave Scolera.
Good evening, Board. Dave Scolera, Tupannington Place in Nashua. I emailed the board this last week. Many of you know, I'm looking to get a little bit of transparency into City of Nashua investments. I want to make it crystal clear. I am on the city's side in regards to insane right-to-no requests. I know that's a hot issue. I'm on the city's side in that. I was just willing to go up to the website and find a list of where the city was making their current investments. I couldn't find it. I'm pretty astute at websites. I work for a billion-dollar company that builds websites, but I couldn't find it. So I sent an email to Mr. Griffin. I'm a resident city of Nashua, looking for some transparency in where we're investing our funds, level of detail. Well, didn't get a reply, but it got filed as a right-to-no request. So be it. So, all of a sudden, now five, six people in the city are part of this process. I was sent a response that was not what I was looking for, specifically not what I was looking for, because I was given information on the BPW Pension Fund, which I had said that I already had, and I was looking for the list of other Nashua investments. So I amended that. Appreciate this information. Already have it. This is a few days later. I found those investments, looking for a display of the $56-plus million in equity securities, and $16-plus million in mutual funds, all equities that the city invests, just looking for a detailed list of that portfolio. Replied a few days later, saying, "We don't have that information. We'll get it to you within 10 days." Once again, I was just expecting a link to where this is on the website, because this would be pretty transparent. But no, in the response that I got, said, "We don't have that. We'll get it for you in 10 days." Literally 10 days later, with 15 minutes before the end of the 10th day, I was given something, which was, once again, not what I asked for. I was sent a link to the fiscal year 23 end-of-year statement, which just pointed me to page 59 and 60, of which just showed me the $63 million in equity securities. It's incredibly clear that I'm looking for a list of what those equity securities are. Nobody is delusional by what I'm asking for. I want a list of the portfolio numbers. This isn't proprietary, private information. This information should be publicly available to the citizens of Nashua. We have $63 million invested in equities. We should know where they're invested. You know what a city's passions are, based on where they put their money, and we want to do that. By the way, this board has a responsibility under RSA Title III, 419, Section 7.
30 seconds.
To annually approve an investment policy in the city. I have looked through every minute of the Finance Committee and haven't seen an investment policy come across this board. That's an annual requirement that you have, to understand what your investment policy is. I want to know what the ESG, environmental, social governance policies are around where we're investing our money, but I want to know what the $63 million in equities are that the city is investing. And from Thursday till now, I still haven't gotten a response when I asked for more clarification on that. Thank you.
Mr. Scolera. The mayor is going to address that.
I don't know what you're looking at, but the city does not own, we don't invest in the stock market. I mean, yes, in the BPW Pension Fund does, and you've seen that, but we don't put, we have money in bank CDs, that's it. There's no money in equities. We don't take chances like that. We put the taxpayers' money in absolutely safe bank CDs, and...
Sir, I'm looking at a annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. I was sent this on page 60. Investments as of June 30, 2023 include the following: $16.9 million in U.S. Treasury obligations, $19.6 million in U.S. government agencies, $12.2 million in corporate bonds, $63.3 million in equity securities.
Well, I don't know what that is, and I will look into that.
Neither do I.
But we don't, we don't own, we don't not, but we, the city does not own stocks.
Perhaps that's part of what is in the pension fund, but the pension fund is only $53 million, and that's $63 million. So where's the other $10 million invested?
All right, but there could be an error, but the city does not own, does not invest in the stock market. Except for this pension fund, you know, that's it. That's, that's a board that handles that, but we, the city does not buy stocks and bonds, well, bonds, I don't know, but the city does not buy stocks in the, in the stock markets. It could go down. We could lose people's money. We're not going to do that.
Well, the pension fund does, and that is city money.
Yes, correct. That, and you've seen that, but they do it because they want to try to grow it for the benefit of the pensioners. But as far as the money that the city holds, its surplus and all this, we do not put money in stocks.
Well, our documentation says $63 million in equity securities.
I don't know what that is, but we don't have stocks.
Our financial statement says that we do.
Well, maybe it does, but then that's mistaken.
Okay, I'd look to get clarification on that. Thank you.
Mary Howe.
Good evening to everybody. I want to thank all the aldermen and the mayor for allowing me to come here tonight.
We need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mary Howe, and my address is 44 Sanborn Drive in Nashua.
Thank you.
The reason I wanted to come, I had several questions, but now I am standing here now just, I'd like an answer to just really one question. It appears, from after listening to most of you here, that the aldermen and the mayor, you are all aware that there was going to be some sort of revaluation. Am I correct about that? Anybody can answer me.
We knew there was going to be a revaluation.
All right. And you expect taxpayers to pay the residential part of the bill come the end of December. Is that true?
We're not going to go back and forth with questions, ma'am. This is for you to give comments.
Really, it's very easy. First of all...
This is for you to give us comment.
All I'd like to know is, you all knew that this was coming down this year earlier than we did. I didn't know anything about it until I got my mail on Saturday. It would have been, I consider to be more humanistic or kind, for the people, the residents of the city, to know as they did two years ago, with the revaluation that we had in 2022. That was mentioned in The Telegraph. It was mentioned in The Eagle Tribune, many other places. People were talking about it. We expected people to come. They would say, "You can let them in your house if you want." This I still consider to be a revaluation. The letter states that, of course, it's not etched in stone yet, but my value from last year, it's now appraised about $80,000 more. And I'd just like to share one thing, just to let you know. I was married 51 years to my husband, who would have been with me tonight, except that in May, as we always do, we went down to Florida for two weeks. My husband loved a road trip, so we always drove down and drove back. Took us two days to drive back. On a Friday at 11:00 at night, we arrived at our home. We had a glass of wine. The next, we went to bed because we were exhausted. We had been on the road for 12, 13 hours.
30 seconds.
The next morning, I went to the bank. I left my husband on his lawnmower. I got back about 30 minutes later. I entered the house. I asked him a question. I went into the living room. He was sitting on his favorite part of the couch. His eyes were open, but he was gone. I had no idea. It was not an illness. I had no idea this was coming. I'm still dealing with that shock. Thank goodness. I have wonderful neighbors, wonderful friends, and wonderful family. This letter that I got reminded me of the same sort of shock, not knowing.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Well, I'd just like to know, in the future, wouldn't it be a kind and considerate thing to let the people of Nashua know when there's going to be a difference in their value of their home? Because in the end, we pay for that.
We got the message tonight, ma'am. I'm sorry.
All right, and what is your answer?
Well, I don't send them out. We are aware that people would have liked more communication.
And is there any way you can promise that next, if it's next year, or the year after, if there's another revaluation, we can know at the beginning of the year, so we can budget for that? Think of it. I have less retirement now, because I lost my husband.
Ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. I didn't know that life is on a tight schedule like that. It wasn't for my husband.
Rona Leary, LeRoi? I'm sorry, I can't read the writing very well.
My name is Rona Levy, and I live at 34 Sanborn Drive in Nashua. And I think this is no way to treat the taxpayers of Nashua at all. Our electric has gone up, our water has gone up, our gas has gone up, our insurance for our houses have gone up. Food is astronomical. It's coming to the point where, what bill do I pay? Do I eat this week? What do I buy? In our area, we're all in the same boat. I have medical bills for my husband each month, and they vary. Could be $500, could be $400. I am a caregiver for six and a half years with not a day off, and I don't know how I'm paying these medical bills each month. And it's awful to be treated this way. It's a total lack of respect on all your parts, and you should be ashamed of yourself. It's the taxpayers of Nashua that's paying some of the salaries, and we deserve a lot better than this. And my husband has vascular dementia, so it's a very difficult haul, and I don't have a spare penny to pay for anything. And without the help of my neighbors, I would not be getting through with this. I couldn't do it without them and my family. And I don't appreciate getting that letter sadly, and we deserve so much better than this, and you should all be ashamed of yourselves.
End of public comment. Remarks by members of the board. I'm going to start over here tonight.
I just want to make one correction for the record. I worked at BAE for over 30 years, and when I left, I had 25 people working with me, and they were on every program here in Nashua. And I can tell you, in the 33 years that I was at Sanders Lockey BAE, we did not manufacture a single weapon here in Nashua. So unless they've done something in the last eight years I don't know about, that's not what they do here in Nashua. I can't speak for the entire BAE company, because it's pretty large, but nothing's made here in Nashua.
Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say that I understand everybody's anxiety, everybody's anger, and everybody's entitled to it. Getting that letter was a shock. No one is above the, above that shock. So, please, I want you to know that. But I also want you to know, try not to panic. Try not to, to just assume that you're going to be paying more taxes until you see what the city's valuation is, to see what is happening. I know it's easy for me to say that you think I'm sitting here, and I'm in the catbird seat, but the truth is, I'm not. but the truth is, I'm not. I am in the same boat as, as many of you are, not knowing what's going to be happening. And you've, I've already said what I had to say at the beginning, and I know I'm not going to, you know, make anybody feel better, but for my constituents, I, I have been sending out letters, I've been telling people to look at the, the two links that the city put up, you know, look at houses in your area. It doesn't mean that you were compared necessarily to your next-door neighbor, but there are sales within your area, so you can see what the values of, of like homes are. For my, my colleagues here, the city did put up on the assessing page, there's two new links, so there is a link to every single assessment that went up there, as well as the sales, to every single sale for that one year, if they haven't seen that, you know, so take a look at it and, and so on, but I'll leave it there. And I want to say congratulations to Mount Pleasant for their one-hundredth anniversary. It did rain on Saturday, but they did a phenomenal job, they brought it inside, they had snow cones, and they had lots of cotton candy. I saw more blue teeth and more blue faces than you ever want to see. I feel really bad for those parents and those, lots of sugary-filled kids. But there were ice cream cones, Soul Sisters were there, hazy ice cream was there, there was a lot of history, class photos from eighty-two and beyond. I saw, I, I didn't know them because I didn't go to school there, but there were a lot of hugs and kisses and people seeing teachers from days gone by, and there were a lot of people that were reminiscing and so on. I saw smiles and tears and hugs, and it was, they had over four hundred people that went through that door to say hello and goodbye and, and so on. There was a lot, a lot of reminiscing, so. And Nashua Pal was there, and the soup kitchen was there, it was kind of nice to talk to everybody, hoping maybe Nashua Pal will consider putting something in Ward Three.
Hmm.
Yes, we need something there.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I just want to be clear, we did not know the evaluations were going out this weekend. We knew in two thousand and twenty-three, when we authorized the ability that they were going to happen more often, every two years, no one told us they were going out on Saturday. So I wanted that to be very clear. Yes, in theory, we knew we were going to do a reevaluation at some point, when we were, it was going to be done, and when I say we, it's not we, we have nothing to do with it, it's vision, it's a third party. We authorized it last year to be done more often, and, and one of the reasons we did that is because when we did it, and it had been five years, people were like, when it goes down, are you going to do it again? And what, what the mayor and Director Cummings said at the time is, we will try to do it more often, so it more emulates what's really happening, so we don't have this five-year gap where it goes up crazy amounts like it did. So this is what that is. Now, the assessment does not mean your taxes will go up necessarily, or go up a crazy amount more than it did last year. So it's, you really have to wait, we have to wait until we see what the tax rate's going to be, what the state brings it down to, what that six million that we authorized today bumps it down to, and then really see what, you know, the commercial rate is and see where we are. You know, it, again, we're not the ones doing it, we cannot be involved in the assessments. If we are involved in the assessments, that can be criminal activity, it's happened before. So, you know, when people say that you did it, you guys did it, honestly, I wish I had control over it, but we don't. So, you know, I wish we could make it so everybody had very low taxes, and we try, we try to do our best, but, you know, we did know, but we didn't know. I wish I knew. Saturday I got it, like I said before, and there was no one to talk to about it, you know? We're all in the same boat, we're citizens of Nashua, we fall under the same rules, no one's above the law here, we get no favors, people say I get free stuff at restaurants, I do not, I pay. So we're all in the same boat, and some of us are wealthier than others, and some of us aren't, aren't that wealthy and on Social Security. So we're all different, all of us here are on different spectrums, so we're not trying to, you know, demean the taxpayer, because we obviously are doing, we're, we're getting that same tax bill, and we're getting that same assessment, and it did stink when I saw it, I was not happy to see it. But it doesn't mean that your taxes will go up, so, or the tax rate will go up, I should say. Thank you.
Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. Like to start just by, no, I was, I was a little surprised, I think, like some of my colleagues, that R twenty-four eighty-nine wasn't on the agenda tonight. I, I was prepared to have that conversation, but the reason I voted against bringing it forward this evening was because it wasn't on the agenda, and I don't think it's germane to have that conversation without the public having their opportunity to speak to it. We had some members speak to it at the Budget Review Committee, but we have processes and expectations from the public, and I just think it's in our best interests to adhere to those, and so I just wanted to explain that. Regarding to assessments, I'm preaching to the choir at this point, I've had a lot of conversations this weekend, which on the one hand is nice, I've gotten to meet some constituents I haven't met before and talk with them, and for the most part, they've all been very pleasant, and, you know, I, I won't say understanding, but, you know, after, after some words, understanding of what the position is and where we're at, what we need to see that happen next. But please, you know, I, I think we're all trying to say that, you know, we hear you, please continue to reach out, let's have those conversations, utilize the resources that have been made available to you. If you're not quite sure where to go, we'd all be happy to point you in that proper direction without overstepping our bounds. And finally, Madam President, I find I'm doing this more often than not, but I'd like to recognize one of the unsung residents of Nashua and just recognize the passing of Christine Kelleher. Christine Kelleher, for those who may not be aware, was a teacher at Amherst Street School, bear with me, we shed a lot of tears this week. I knew Mrs. Kelleher on a more personal basis, but we often talk about the superlatives of, about what makes Nashua great, and Mrs. Kelleher worked her way into that teaching position from decades of service to Amherst Street School, as a parent volunteer when her two daughters went there, as a paraprofessional in-house substitute, and then eventually a full-time teacher. And if she was half the teacher, that she was a friend, a mother, a grandmother, then anybody who was lucky to walk into her classroom got the best of Nashua. She really was the epitome of caring, kindness, warmth, treated so many of us in high school like we were her own, and she's going to be dearly missed, and so I just wanted to offer my condolences to the Kelleher and Cahill family. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. So in, in regards to the reevaluation, I just wanted to offer my perspective, and, and that is that not to rush to judgment on it yet, because essentially, we've known for a while that the housing market has continued to, to rise, values have continued to go up in the New England areas, as well as across the country, but in particular, this part, north of Boston, has, has really seen a significant increase in value. However, what, what folks need to understand is, is that the, the budget hasn't gone up by that amount. So what that means is that when you, when they come out with the new tax rate, the multiplier is most likely going to be less than what it is now. So you can't take that current multiplier and do apply, that's why the letter says, don't do that, because in all reality, we haven't raised the budget, the amount of your new assessment, it's just what the value is of your home. The budget's gone up by what the budget's gone up by, and then that is distributed across the city. So we really need to find out what the commercial rates are, because, you know, according to the mayor, they went up as well, and if they went up relative to what the, the residential did, or at least cut that in half, then the burden hopefully won't shift too much onto the, the residences. So really, this is something that we need to wait and see what's going to happen, because in, again, in, in all likelihood, that multiplier is going to go down, our tax rate is going to go down because our value has gone up, and that's, to me, in my opinion, a good thing.
Over here, Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, for my part, I'll own what I can as alderman. I know we passed this last year, and I have been talking about it to my constituents, specifically because of what my colleague just mentioned, that I think it's unfair that the previous assessment was done at a time when commercial properties were affected by COVID and, and undervalued, in my opinion, where everyone had just spent all of that time in their homes, adding value to them, you know, really enhancing them, and I think it did unfairly shift the burden over to property owners from commercials. So I have been talking that up, and I think whenever we pass legislation, we do have an obligation to be somewhat educated on it and to engage our constituents. I can see that some of us, Alderman Cleese specifically, have been hitting this issue and are very, very literate on it, and I think that is what we signed up to do when we ran for our offices, is we need to be these liaisons. We may not know the details, we may not know when the letter's going out, I don't know when they're going to do utility work in, in the tree streets. I know generally it's going to happen within a six-week period, I don't know when a sink hole's going to drop out of the, the bottom of Amherst Street, but I do know to tell people about it when I find out about it, and to give them useful advice, and to caution them that things are happening. So I think we need to focus on that, because as was stated earlier at the beginning of this meeting, we do need to treat our residents with grace. We don't know what they're going through, so just stirring them up or winding them up with part of the story that may be specific to our experience, that's not responsible. We need to be talking about things like the tax rate, we need to be talking about things like the budget, and we need to be making sure they know that if they have a disagreement with their, their valuations, to go get that addressed now, rather than finding out about the process well after it's useful to them. So that's, that's what I can own. I, I started to recognize Alderman Cleese, specifically, I, on Saturday, went to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention's Out of the Darkness Walk, it was an amazing event, it was very well-attended. It's amazing to see that many people there to support each other, it's tragic that so many people have been touched by suicide, and that we have to have that many people coming to just one of many national walks for solidarity for it. But seeing the strength and, and resilience that people have, knowing that we don't always have control over all of the bad things that might happen, but at least we can stand together, that was inspiring. Nonetheless, it was a rainy day, it was a very difficult day, so going to the Centennial at St. Mount Pleasant afterwards was the ultimate pick-me-uper I could have asked for. Seeing the kids that were there having a great time, seeing the families all greeting each other, checking in on how things have been over the week, I saw not a few teachers introduce themselves to parents and say, you know, I have your kid in my class, it's, it's going great, we're really excited to have them there, you know, talking about specific strengths, and then looking at the parents feel heard, appreciated, proud of their children. That's very moving, and I think that speaks to the community that Mount Pleasant has, I think that speaks to the leadership that Trish has, Alderman Cleese has like unabashedly shown, she wears her heart on her sleeve, and I think we all appreciate that as an example. And then, finally, I wanted to acknowledge the Multicultural Festival, which was a great event, it was very, very well-attended, it was very, very necessary for building those kind of connections in our community. I think it's important that we continue to support efforts like that, and I wanted to thank the library for hosting, the Cultural Connections Committee for organizing, and all the different organizations that participate. Thank you.
Alderman Gavilla?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank the airport manager, Chris Lynch, and all those at DPW made wheels and wings happen over the weekend. Had a little bit of rain, still managed about sixteen hundred attendees, though, so not bad for some rain. Thank you.
Alderman Marin?
Thank you, Madam President. I too went to a, and I drove by the darkness to Wags to Whiskers at the Anheuser-Busch Alderman Lopez and I are both very talented clinicians, and, but unfortunately, he can live in darkness on the weekends, where I was trying to get away from it for a little bit. So we went over to Wags to Whiskers, my company sponsor there, and we were talking about emotional sport animals, and I thought it was an opportune time after hearing about suicide just a second ago, to remind folks that, you know, go down in Humane Society, you may feel like you're lonely, sad, there may be an animal there that you can adopt. And I know that there are companies, maybe mine, that are sponsoring the adoption fee, maybe you can't afford, to get the, the adoption fee paid, but there are senior animals there, kittens, puppies that were abandoned, and if you need to get through the day and you need something that has been missing or lost, you might find that an animal is going to help you through the, through, through a difficult time. I'm going to try to keep so, I'm going to keep the positivity going. I know the president does not like talking about politics, the rule, but we have a state rep in the back there, he just happens to be a state rep, Lou Juris from Ward Seven, and very important to bring this up, now that I see him back there, is that over at Bicentennial, my daughter attends Bicentennial, it's a very dangerous area for kids to cross the street, and all, like, it's, might as well be a highway. Well, there's been a shortage of crossing guards, and this gentleman raised his hand and said, I'm going to do this for the kids. Not even his ward, not in his district that he represents, he came down to Ward Nine, and he said, I'm, I'm going to help these kids get this, across the street. And my, I'm picking up my other kids at my other school, where every day we're beeping at Lou, saying thank you for what he's doing. So just a little bit of positivity about how the community sticks together and helps folks when we are in need, and I can't think of a better way to end my statements by acknowledging someone like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Juris. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. Very proud of your representative for taking on the extra duty. I was considering doing it myself, except a little SOBs might get to me, I don't know. But...
My daughter definitely will.
Yeah, yeah. But it, it is something, and I wish that we could pay a livable or a wage to get people to do it, but yet we have people that sit, you know, over where you're sitting, that were spending, overspending and spending too much, and it comes down to like matters of safety and everything, and, you know, people got to realize that, you know, since the caveman era, we have collectively bonded together and accepted these responsibilities, and everybody chips in into the kitty, so it kind of works out good. I would just like to give a positive shout-out on a very tragic situation. My condolences to the family of the gentleman that was involved with the motorcycle accident up in Amherst Street. My son had to call, and, you know, they tried their best, but some of these things you just don't win at, you know, so, but I would like to shout out to Dashar Fire Rescue on this very difficult circumstances, they tried their best for the person. And then finally, I would like to thank the mayor. I was up at the New Hampshire House when it came up with like what you say with, you know, the tax bill and stuff like that. That was one of the few times I really saw people get into wrapping the red flag with the elephant on it, around them, you know? And in other words, I want people to realize that a gentleman... that a gentleman from Bartlett voted for that in the example. Lancaster, places quite remote. I mean, these are people who go up to the state. Nashua is a donor town. But these are people who go up to the state with the bucket and expect the state to throw in a few extra dollars in. What do we get? We fund them. You know, imagine New Hampshire if it wasn't for Manchester and Nashua buying the Lotto tickets. You know, you're going to tell me Mount Vernon's going to really step to the plate? It ain't going to happen, you know. And then when Nashua comes up and asks a favor, because all 27 delegates of Nashua recommended not to support this, it fell upon Depp Is. And as we go in the future to vote, I hope people realize this. Yes, you could be frugal, but there are some things you need to do. You know, I myself, I'm not running again, you know. Was, I don't know, how many years I do? 18? I don't know, like, you know. You know, I get released on good behavior, you know.
How? Are you sure about that?
But it was a lot of fun, and I will miss it. But I won't miss the shenanigan set, like I say, I saw that particular day. Take the partisan out of it. Vote your conscience, you know. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'd just like to express my condolences to the family and friends of Mark Faulkner. Mark Faulkner was a 27-year city employee. He worked at the Park and Rec Department for all those years, and I just want to send my condolences to his family and friends. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Tomorrow night, we're going to have a meeting of the Infrastructure Committee. And Ms. Graham, also too, there's going to be the police. Are they on the docket as well?
No, that is canceled.
That was canceled?
The 6 o'clock meeting is canceled.
Okay, the police was canceled, so there's much rejoicing. We'll get to that. But Matt Sullivan has brought up that he is going to, you know, discuss the commuter rail, which is another thing that falls upon Depp Is of Conca, you know.
This is committee announcements, Alderman O'Brien.
I had, I couldn't resist.
Thank you.
But tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, be there or be square.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. October 9th, at 7:00 PM, Joint PDC Human Affairs, discussing what we can do to either introduce or change legislation to address unhoused and low-income housing in the city. We'll have Director Hanum, Director Sullivan, and her name escapes me, the housing...
Latonya Wisioli.
Yes, will be there to discuss very important work that's being done here.
Okay, further committee announcements. Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. Next Monday, the 30th, we will have a special Penechuk Water Special Meet, sorry, Water, Penechuk Water Special Committee meeting at 7:00 PM here in the chamber.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this Thursday, Joint Special School Billing Committee at 7:00 o'clock, but it's going to be here in the Aldomatic Chamber as the Nashua High North is doing something to their boardroom.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the September 24, 2024 meeting of the Board of Aldermen, so be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? They're adjourned at 9:03 PM. Thank you, everyone.